All right, I'd like to call the May 5th, 2015 City Council Meeting to order. Could we have roll call, please?
Mayor Dukes.
Here.
Vice Mayor Buckland.
Here.
Councilmember Cleveland. Councilmember Didball.
Here.
Councilmember Gale.
Here.
All right, if we could have the invocation by Councilmember Buckland and then the pledge of allegiance by Councilmember Didball. Everyone, please stand. If you'll bury your heads with me as I pray. Almighty Father, first let me say thank you on behalf of all those that are gathered here tonight. We're truly blessed by your presence. We ask for your guidance and clear vision so the efforts of staff, council, and this community be of benefit for all of us that live in the surrounding area. In your most blessed name, I pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of United States of America and to the republic of which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I may have to use that if this doesn't work here to go up here. Oh, there we go, now it's working, okay. All right, first of all, we have a couple of proclamations. Just want to acknowledge fire apparatus operator Guy Smith's retirement. He was unable to be here tonight, but just want to acknowledge him anyhow. And then item number two is presentation for National Nurses Week, May 6th through 12th. Accepting from Fremont Write-Out Nurses, we have four nurses. Menjinder Renwa. Well, I'm gonna butcher these names, so I'm just gonna ask all the nurses if they would come forward, and we'll let them introduce themselves. I'm gonna pass the mic and let you each introduce yourself, please.
I'm Susan Vivens in the Quality Department.
Heather Greenstaff in the Quality Department.
Tina Phillips, Wound Care, three main, four main.
And Shannon McGee from the Emergency Department.
Thank you, because I didn't match all the names that I had here anyhow, so that's a good thing. So, all right, I'm gonna let you hold the proclamation. All right, May 6th through 12th was National Nurses Week, and nearly 3.1 million nurses in the United States comprise our nation's largest healthcare profession. Professionally, nursing has been demonstrated to be an indispensable component in the safety and quality of care hospitalized and home cared patients. Write-Out Health celebrated National Nurses Week Ethical Practice Quality Care with a week-long series of appreciation events for the more than 500 registered nurses and 400 nursing support staff working at Fremont Write-Out, Write-Out Occupational Health, Write-Out Home Health Hospice, and Write-Out Senior Living Facilities in Yuba City. Now therefore, let it be resolved that I, John Dukes, Mayor of Yuba City, on behalf of the entire council, ask that the residents of Yuba City join me in honoring the many nurses who care for us all and show our appreciation for the community's nurses every opportunity throughout the year. Would anyone like to say anything? Other than your names, that was that, eh?
You've probably seen an awful lot of change happening in our community, and it has been absolutely wonderful to get the support of our community, and Fremont Write-Out continues to rise and strive to give the best possible care to each and every one of you, and we're very proud to be a part of this community and to serve our community.
All right, thank you very much. Item number three, May is Bike Month, and the presentation is going to be presented by Spencer Morrison, interim Yuba City Bike Committee Chair Member.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. I'm actually interim committee member, just new this week. Tonight, it is my pleasure to bring before you the Bicycle Advisory Committee Annual Report. The Bicycle Advisory Committee is made up of members of the public interested in cycling and key city departments, formed to prepare the city's bicycle master plan to enhance bicycling in Yuba City and recommend projects that will implement the master plan per council's direction. This committee continues to improve the bicycling community through safer routes, cycling destinations, and signage. The national collision data trends are not impressive due to rates of accidents continually increasing. However, age is steadily increasing as well, so maybe the focus on youth outreach is working. This slide is local bicycle collision data. You can see that there has been an increase compared to 2013. Thirty-five bicycle collisions and no DUI bicycle violations in 2014. One of the reasons for the increase in, or should say the big decrease in '13 and the increase in '14 is 2012 was a bit of an anomaly late a year. It was quite high, and so that made for quite a large decrease in '13, but you can see that the trend line is showing a steady increase over time. The committee does support bicycle education. These events on the slide are performed primarily by the men and women in the Traffic Division utilizing grant funds from the Office of Traffic Safety. And this is a slide of the bicycle helmet enforcement total citations being given out year to year. In bicycling news in general, there's new this year significant legislation, the Three Feet for Safety Act. It requires the drivers to give at least three feet of clearance when passing a bicyclist on the road, or if their three feet is not possible, to wait until it's safe to pass the cyclist. This is pretty significant because it affects, this happens all the time. There's a lot of motorist cyclist contact and a lot of overcoming, so to pass an act that affects so many cyclists and so many motorists is a big deal. But in the end, it's common sense. You know, if you're gonna pass a tractor or a school bus or any other vehicle on the road that you're sharing, you'd give it the same amount of distance and you would wait until it was safe to pass. It's no different. Projects spurred on by the committee since its inception, they've been completed by Public Works and funded with capital improvement project funds, and generous grants from the Feather River Air Quality Management District are shown on these slides. Lots of bike lane projects and charos have been installed. Some bicycle parking cost share programs have helped install 72 bike racks. The committee has supported the May's Bike Month cause since 2011, in which the city employees alone cycled 4,300 miles last May. Installed more bike lanes, improved lots of locations. And in the future, there are more bike lanes to be installed at the locations on the slide. Lots of striping. One of the common things you might see around town is the bike lane will continue to the right of a right turn pocket, which makes a potential conflict with the cyclist going straight ahead and a car turning to the right. And so that can be fixed with additional striping improvements. And of course, we're in the middle of May's Bike Month 2015. May's Bike Month has lots of activities, but on May 6th, it's Bike to School Day, and these are the schools that are planning to celebrate. And they will celebrate with lots of giveaways and snacks. The Chamber of Commerce has been helping out with some of those events as well. Also on May, there will be fueling stations for those coming and going across the Fifth Street bike path or along Second Street there by the Fifth Street Bridge. Be able to enjoy some healthy snacks to get you on your way. Perhaps to get out the door and get to work on your bicycle, you skip breakfast. And so this is a nice little feature on May 6th to take advantage of. And there's also a Chamber of Commerce event at the Gap tomorrow, and it will be, if you ride your bike, they will feed you lunch, and there'll be lots of vendors out and bike shops to talk to. And of course, May 15th is the traditional Bike to Work Day. These schools have bicycle rodeo scheduled in 2015. Each rodeo includes helmet fitting and distribution as well as a safety presentation skills course. The Bicycle Advisory Committee has accomplished many things, including expanding the bicycle network, introducing the concept of charos, which you can see all over the city streets. And just for those that don't know that term, the charos are those arrows that look like they might be in the line of traffic. And the reason that what they're doing is they're showing the cyclists and the motorists where to expect to be to avoid the doors opening into the path of the cyclists. It's a safety concept. Again, installed bike racks, prepared and distributed a map of Yuba City bicycle network, and logged over 82,000 miles through the May's Bike Month efforts citywide since 2011. And I went back and looked at the city numbers, and city employees alone cycled over 12,700 of those miles. Of course, this is the map that shows the pathways through Yuba City that are either, that are bike friendly. And this map is available along with much more information at BikeYubacity.com. I encourage anybody that rides a bicycle in Yuba City to take a look at that website. There's a ton of information. And the Bicycle Advisory Committee is creating a better bicycling community and wants to thank the city council for your support. Do you have any questions?
Any questions of Spencer? I do have one. How many of those 4,300 miles were yours last year?
I did ride last year, but we had 28, probably almost 30 participants that contributed to that. It was a very successful event.
I, on Sunday, was driving through the wine country, and they were having a bike race through there, and there was a bus in front of me, so, and it was a road that couldn't be passed. And so we were driving fairly slow through that area because we couldn't pass, and the bus was, he couldn't pass either. So we were along with the bike race, but it was nice country to be driving along.
Absolutely.
So, but it's certainly the safety of that three-foot margin is very important, so. Thank you, Spencer.
You're welcome.
All right. All right, next is public communication. You are welcome and encouraged to participate in this meeting. Public comment is taken on items listed on the agenda when they are called. Public comment on items not listed on the agenda will be heard at this time. Comments on controversial items may be limited, and large groups are encouraged to select representatives to express the groups' opinion. Is there anyone who would like to speak on an item that is not on our agenda tonight? All right.
Appreciate it very much. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Pat. All right, is there anyone else who'd like to speak on an item not on the agenda? Seeing none. Written request. Do we have any written requests tonight?
We did not receive any written requests.
All right, thank you. Item number five, appearance of interested citizens. Members of the public may address the city council on items of interest that are within the city's jurisdiction. Individuals addressing general comments will be encouraged to limit their statements to three minutes. And so I have a number of speaker cards, and I presume that there will be some more as the evening goes on. So if you wish to speak on any of the items on the agenda, there are speaker cards out in the back, if you could fill those out, please. All right, item number six, public hearing. Public hearing regarding the approval of Sutter Butte Flood Control Agency's issuance of bonds for the Feather River West Levy Project.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the city council. Subufka plans to issue assessment revenue bonds to both refund the existing outstanding loan with Rabo Bank and finance costs for the Feather River West Levy Project and future levy improvements within the Yuba City Basin. In order to proceed, the law requires that a local agency within those boundaries, that the public capital improvements are to be located, hold a public hearing, and approve the financing and make a finding of significant public benefit after the public hearing is held. Both the staff report and the public notice indicated that Subufka intended to issue 40 million in new bonds to refund the Rabo Bank loan and to have additional bond proceeds to do construction projects with. For clarification and correction, the amount that Subufka does plan to proceed with is a total of 50 million for the new bond issue and refunding the old debt. Subufka staff Mike Inamina and Seth Warzal, their budget manager and their executive director, are here tonight to answer any questions that the council might have that are more detailed than what was included in the staff report. Without staff request, the city council hold a public hearing and adopt the resolution making a finding of significant public benefit and approving the agency's second issuance of bonds. A revision to the resolution is recommended that makes a minor change to provide for the additional proceeds of approximately 20 million in addition to the 25 million Rabo Bank loan refunding with a $50 million limit that the Subufka Board would authorize when combining the total. And that would include an approximately 20 million in additional funding available for Subufka to do construction project cost funding with in addition to capitalize interest and cost of issuance.
Thank you, Robin. Any questions of staff at this time?
Not at this time.
All right, at this time, I'd like to open the public hearing and invite those who'd like to speak on this item. I do have one speaker card, Elaine Miles, if you'd like to step to the podium.
Elaine Miles, 1351 Jamie Drive, Yuba City. I just heard Robin say 20 million and 25. That comes to 45. I didn't take Common Core. The proposal that was with the agenda said 40 million. I went to a meeting yesterday of the Finance Committee, and it said 50 million. First, I consider this possibly a violation of the Brown Act and other provisions if the public notices list one amount, but the actual intent is a higher amount. I fully understand the city is attempting to fulfill requirements for notice, but lack of full disclosure will taint the trust people have in your levy oversight responsibilities. Second, when the Proposition 218 property assessment was passed, the voters were repeatedly told, and lots of flyers that came out, that the proposed construction would cost $250 million, with the property owners paying through their assessments potentially 29% of that overall cost. Subsequently, the Subufka staff has reported significant reductions in that percentage with the state and other governmental agencies picking up 74% to 81% of the costs. The property owners have been paying since 2010, and the budget shows $750,000 from those property owners yearly. So, $3,750,000 over a five-year period. A bond was sold June 13th, 2013 for $41,035, excuse me, $41,035,000, but actual costs were $42,612,450. Taking 29% of our original $250 million cost, that would leave $31,465, excuse me, it's hard for me to do millions. That would leave $31,465,000 to fund, not 50 million that is being requested. But this does not count the yearly assessment income. However, the budget has been increased by $38,930,000, 16% about, bringing to a total of $288,930,000. So if using the original 29% of this amount, the total bond commitment would be $83,789,700. 50 million additional bond, which would bring the total to $91,350,000. That's $7,245,300 more than the 29% cost allocation for the assessed properties. And this does not account for the $750,000 we get every year. We understand that the cultural issues may increase costs by $10 million, but we lack a detailed explanation of why the estimated costs have risen nearly 39 million. Additionally, no matter what figure you use, the 250 million original or the current, about 289 million for the amended budget, the amount of the bonds is higher than the commitment to the voters. Further, we have repeatedly been told the percentage local property owners must bear has been reduced percentage-wise, ranging 18% to 24%. So why are we proposing to exceed the legal cost sharing of the property owners? Even if we use the 16% higher budget, issuance of $50 million in bonds exceeds the 29% cost share. At the very least, if this is done to help cover the costs for the state before their funding materializes, this governing body and Subufka should have a written commitment that those funds must reimburse the property owners' debt, their bond debt, and assurance that our funds will not be shifted to non-levy improvement costs. And what Ms. Batagnat just presented was 45 million, not 50. So I'm very confused about this $50 million request.
All right, I'll let you go over the three minutes, but I know there's a lot to go through. So either Robin, would you like to have Mike Inamina or Seth come up and address these? Or do you want to do that?
They would probably like to add to what I have to say. First, thank you to Mrs. Miles for sharing her concerns. I was able to do some research since Ms. Miles shared her concerns with me in advance and determined that a bond counsel has indicated that this is something more appropriate for the Subufka Board to address, that our city council role tonight is to hold the public hearing and determine if there's a public benefit, which she and I discussed earlier also, and we both firmly believe there is a public benefit to our citizens for proceeding with the levy improvements. It's a matter of justifying the budget, and that's something that the Subufka Board and Subufka staff is much more familiar with. So I would refer that back to Subufka to address at their level.
So my question, Seth, do you want to address it tonight, or we'll just deal with it at the board meeting? Do you want to come up? Okay, so the item that we're looking at tonight is, is this in the public interest? And is there public benefit? And so is there anyone else in the public who'd like to speak on this item? All right, seeing none, I'll close the public hearing, bring it back to the council for motion or direction.
You know, having been at the Finance Committee meeting, I, you know, understand Ms. Miles' questions and concerns, but I think coming back to us at this point in time, and I believe at the Finance Committee, and I think trying to answer a lot of these questions tonight for us here at this board, that just has to do is, is this the best interest to refinance some of these bonds at lower rates? And I think the rest of the stuff will come back out later when it comes back for public hearing. A dollar amount, I don't think there's a dollar amount set on this thing. So with that, I'm gonna make a motion to approve staff's recommendation.
All right, have motion, do we have a second?
I'll second that.
All right, any further comments? Just one comment is that these bonds are being let out earlier than what was anticipated, and the reason for that primarily was to take advantage of the lower interest rates currently and that we see that they're going to be going up in the future. And so this is just a timing issue, but thank you, Elaine, for your comments tonight, and I would direct those figures to the Subufka staff and let them be prepared for the board meeting, I believe it's the 13th, and we'll go from there. All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Staff's recommendation was based on a maximum bond value of 50 million, and that would be the maximum amount.
Up to, yep.
All right. So your motion included up to the 50 million?
Yes.
All right. And then this will be sorted out at the Subufka Board meeting then. Thank you. All right, item number seven, Community Development Block Grant, 2015 to 2019 Consolidated Plan, 215 to 216, Actual, our Annual Action Plan, Citizens Participation Plan, and Neighborhood Revitalization Strategy. Mr. Gale.
Great, thank you, Mayor Dukes and councilmembers. It's a pleasure this evening to be before you to talk about our, every five years, we have this opportunity to talk about our consolidated plan. And under the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, which I will call HUD from now on, we are an entitlement community which receives funding on an annual basis through CDBG, Community Development Block Grants Funds. And tonight is our opportunity to talk about this process to hold a public hearing, take any comments that you might have and comments from the public, and then in two weeks, we'll have another public hearing and then hopefully adopt this document. And there's a few parts of it. First is, how do we go about with our, I kind of went through the first two quickly. So the consolidated plan and the process. First, we're extremely lucky to have an amazing staff member and consultant who put this together, Katrina Woods, the administrative analyst in Development Services Department, and Carol Stewart, right here, were the two that put this document together. I think as you saw, it's about 170 pages, a lot of time and effort and dedication went in. I'm just the one that gets to present it. So I wanted to recognize them and thank them for that effort. So how does that effort go? Our consultants meet with the key stakeholders throughout the community and staff. And then one of the most important parts is citizen participation. And I'll talk a little bit about our citizen participation and how it improved this year and how we'll see it improving every year as some of the things we did this year. What can CDBG funds be used for? And they can be used for economic developments, job training, first-time homebuyer assistance, code enforcement, crime prevention, graffiti abatement, lighting in communities, senior services, youth activities. There are also what are called home funds, which we have to apply for, and we've received allocations in 2006 and 2011, and we still have money left over from those. And those can be used for rehab of existing residential structures, new construction, acquisition of land, but basically for affordable housing. So what were the priorities for the past five years? The priorities, and I think it's obviously important to look at what we did for the past five years as we present what the recommendations are in this year's consolidated plan. And those included public facility improvements, citywide capital improvements, a street and sidewalk, a significant amount of funds are used for ADA improvements. A street and sidewalk, a significant amount of funds are used for ADA improvements. Rehabilitation, and then interim assistance. And really, this could not be done without the partnership with a, with a, a significant amount of nonprofit. And providers within our communities. I know we have Freed here this evening, which provides a significant amount of, of assistance. In providing services to the seniors and, and disabled community. Uh, who have received the funds over the last five years. Uh, when it says public facilities here, um, included in that would be rehabilitations to the Salvation Army Depot. Butchy's, Butchy's Pool, the Housing Authority and, and Richland Housing with some wells, and then sidewalks. Um, our housing and rehab projects, um, almost a half million dollars over the past five years have gone to a variety of different organizations. From Casa de Esperanza to the Senior Handyman Program through our Parks and Recs Program. Uh, public services, uh, again, the Salvation Army has received funding. Uh, hand, hands up, ministry has received funding, and we've also provided funding to our, our partners. I'm sorry, our partners with, um. The Yuba Sutter Homeless Consortium, I think I got that right. Yuba Sutter, Sutter Yuba, Yuba Sutter. And, uh, and all great organizations. So, I, I want to talk about citizen participation. One of the things that staff tried to do this year was to try to engage the community better. And we had our best turnout yet, uh, participation in responding to any type of survey, and we only had forty-nine. Uh, but that was a significant improvement from where we've been in, in the past. And we engaged both, uh, our service providers and also the business community in trying to get, get some responses to these questions. To identify what the priorities would be for our two thousand and fifteen, uh, nineteen, uh, planning period. And those pri- uh, priorities came into housing, public services, infrastructure, public facility, and, and economic development. And really, it's in line with a lot of things that, that we had done in the past. And one of the things that was done in our last consolidated plan was our neighborhood revitalization strategy. And I'll talk a little bit more about how we've been able to expand that in our, our, our great hands event, our hands event. That we do each and, and every year. So this neighborhood revitalization strategy, which is a key part of the consolidated plan, is, um. Is, is we're, uh, it provides us an opportunity of, of where we can, uh, fund projects within our CDBG program. Uh, CDBG is often, um, is identified for low income neighborhoods and for economically disadvantaged communities. And this, that, this neighborhood strategy really assists us in, in generating neighborhood participation for long-term community developments. Um, it bridges that gap between local government agencies and the business communities and trying to provide assistance. And it fosters the growth of resident-based initiatives to identify and address housing and economic and human services need. I think you can see that in some of the areas that we've done our hands event, as people have, have come behind. And, and really take, uh, pride in either homeownership or, or a neighborhood, even if they don't own a home. Uh, here is, is the map, uh, our updated map of the neighborhood revitalization strategy. Uh, it's expanded, and the expansion would be, uh, right here was Highway ninety-nine, it stopped here. So it's now, um, goes all the way over to Walton. And then additionally, it also stops at Highway twenty, which would be, I think I'm just about right, and goes all the way up to Queens. So it's a significant, uh, expansion of our, of our strategy. We still need to meet all the requirements that CDBG, CDBG and HUD requires. Um, but it's a, a great addition to see and expanded, uh, a strategy within, within this neighborhood. Uh, finally, um, there's the five-year plan, and then there's the one-year action plan. And this is a list of all of the agencies that, uh, currently are proposed to receive, uh, funding. Uh, the city received, uh, for the first time, we did all online applications. We, we received twenty-three applications, um, for a total of one point million requested in, in funding. Um, of the twenty-three, uh, applications, seven were declined for, uh, for funding. So the maj- majority of them received funding, and here is a breakdown of, of those funding for each organization. Including a general administration. At this time, I can answer any questions you might have. And would ask that you open a public hearing so we can receive any comment that we might receive to, uh, today from the public.
All right, thank you Darren. Any questions of staff? All right, at this point, I'd like to open the public hearing. I have one speaker card on this item. Claudia Hollis, if you'd like to go to the podium.
Claudia Hollis, I'm branch manager at Freed Center for Independent Living in Maryville. We are a resource and aging disability center. We serve Yuba Sutter and Colusa County from our office in Maryville. Um, first of all, I just want to say that, well, we're very free. Uh, about to propose funding of ten thousand dollars for our fix-it program. The fix-it program happens to be, um, our most utilized program that we have in our office. Just to give you a little bit of perspective. Three years ago, we thought we were doing good when we served over two hundred consumers in a, in a year. Which goes from October to September for our, our budget purposes, recording purposes. Last year, we served over four hundred consumers. And here we are in May, and we're surpassing five hundred consumers. Um, and over eighty percent of the consumers that we serve are over the age of sixty. So more and more, we're seeing the issue that we used to deal with, with people. At younger ages with disabilities, we are seeing the same requests, the same needs from seniors. Because they have a very different mindset than our grandparents, than our parents had. Um, they're very savvy in technology. Um, they, their main desire is to remain in their homes as long as possible. And to remain in the community, to be, um, involved in community activities. And be able to access those activities and services. And, um, so we do a lot of work to enable. People to be able to do that and to remain, um, in the community and remain in their home. Um, we also get funding from Area Four Agency on Aging for our fix-it program, and that's for the county. And we have been, um, let's just say, we have been put on notice. Because we are overperforming as far as Area Four is concerned, and they want an answer for that. And my answer is that we are simply reflecting what is happening throughout our society, throughout our nation. We have seniors that are aging, we've got a lot more seniors every day that are turning sixty and older. And it's just a reflection. So, um, I come here tonight because. I can't tell you how much this program is needed. And I hope that you will take the time to look at the report. And we can't, um, we can't continue down the path that we have of the type of housing that we have designed in the past. We have an aging housing stock. And it's very, um, inaccessible for a lot of seniors. And they're coming to us to get minor home repair, like grab bars for the bathroom, handrails. Um, minor electrical repair, minor plumbing repair, because they can't do it themselves. But they can't afford a more expensive way to do it. And so they're looking for us for the free services that they can get from our volunteers. It means that we have to create more accessible housing. And I noticed in the report that the regional housing authority said that they have not received any request. For accessible housing for section eight. Um, perhaps that's true, but I think a lot of it has to do, people with disabilities are probably saying. I'll just take whatever housing unit I get, and then we're having to come after the fact and try to fix it for them. So it makes it inhabitable for them.
All right, Claudia, I need to have you wrap up. You're exceeding your three minutes. All right.
And I will come the next meeting.
All right, thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, and the next speaker on this is Elaine Miles.
Thank you. I really have a question. I'd like to know how the perimeters are set up. And why it doesn't go west of Walton? Is that because you haven't officially taken over our area that you annexed? Many years ago?
Let staff answer that question. That, that's it, so. Unless somebody else wants to speak on this item?
So obviously, you can see we have a great partner in Freed and with Claudia who, who provides just amazing services. So, uh, thank you Claudia. Also, she's amazing with her reporting, which a big part of the CDBG program is reporting back to the federal government of the uses. And it's nice to have partners like her. As relates, uh, to Mrs. Miles' comments, it has nothing to do with, uh, there, that area of Walton. It really has to do with census tracts and, um. Census tracts, so the economic data that comes out of each census tracts. Qualifies areas to be inside of a neighborhood revitalization strategy. A- as part of our documentation, it all, it also talks specifically about how that neighborhood revitalization strategy was, uh, was put together. So it has nothing to do other than, uh, data that we have to, to justify the use of CDBG funds to create that.
All right, thank you. All right, is there anyone else like to speak on this item? Seeing none? Close the public hearing, bring it back to the council for action.
I'll make a motion to move staff's recommendation.
All right, have motion, and a second. Any further comments?
So, Mr. Mayor, just as a, a point of clarification, your action this evening is to continue the public hearing. So this will be back at your following meeting, uh, next in May.
All right, thank you.
This was just to provide an opportunity for any additional comments.
All right, so we don't have any action to take tonight other than?
Other than to continue that public hearing.
We do continue, continue it. All right, Hollis in favor of continuing the item? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right, item is continued. All right. And item number eight, chemical bid. Spencer Morris.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I bring for you this evening the, uh, annual chemical bid for two thousand and fifteen. Uh, we did, uh, collaborate with staff to establish a list of chemicals that they were going to be needing in the next fiscal year. And sent notification to sixty vendors about those chemicals, nine, nine chemicals, and received seventeen responses. The fiscal impact estimated is going to be estimated at, uh, eight hundred and thirty thousand, seven hundred and seventy dollars. Uh, mostly in fifteen, sixteen, as that's where ninety percent of these chemicals will be utilized. I'll be a little bit small, but on the, on the screen is a list of the, uh, the successful bidders on the nine chemicals. Which include liquid chlorine, boros, solactic acid, sodium hydroxide, sodium bisulfate. Lime slurry, aluminum sulfate, liquid oxygen, and powder activated carbon. The prices that, uh, of the successful bidders, uh, do not limit the purchases. If staff were to, uh, shop around, uh, the time of purchase and find that on the spot market. Uh, offer them a better deal, they're not contractually obligated to buy, uh, chemicals from these successful bidders. And there is, uh, every, now and again, um, a cooperative, uh, con- uh, concept comes up. Like they have in the Bay Area, um, that works in the Bay Area because of the, um, the concentration of users in the Bay Area. When we start to add out, uh, spur agencies, like we would be compared to the Bay Area up here in Yuba City. Um, the members are concerned about the cost of hauling, uh, and delivery, uh, increasing their costs as well. Have not been excited about allowing us to come into their cooperative, uh, at this time. So, short of, uh, starting our own cooperative, um, then, uh, there's not one available to us at this time. So staff's recommendation is to award the formal bid fifteen dash six, uh, contracts for the period of May first, two thousand and fifteen. Through April thirty, two thousand and sixteen typo, based on the low bid in all categories as listed in the staff report. Any questions?
All right, any questions of staff? Uh, I know that there was some talk, you talked about the cooperatives, that we're now members of the Regional Water Authority. That perhaps we may be able to piggyback onto their, um, purchasing of chemicals. And that, uh, it's good to see that if we are able to do that, that we're not locked into these contracts. That we could make a change if we were able to do that over the next year. And to be able to take advantage of lower prices as a cooperative purchase.
We do have options, and the successful bidders may be disappointed, but we serve our community, so.
All right, thank you then. If I don't have any other comments or questions, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll second that.
All right, have motion and a second. Any further comments? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None? All right, unanimous. Item number nine, purchase of one commercial wide-area mower. Brad McIntyre.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the council. Hey, uh, this evening, I'm here this evening to, uh, request council to, uh, award the purchase of a commercial wide-area mower. From Valley Truck and Tractor of Yuba City in the amount of fifty-three thousand, one hundred and fifty-one dollars and twenty-five cents. As well as to authorize the finance director to make a supplemental appropriation in the amount of the same, same amount, fifty-three thousand, one hundred and fifty-one dollars and twenty-five cents. Within the vehicle replacement fund. The replacement mower, uh, will be utilized in the Parks Department. It will, uh, be utilized in our sixty acres of parks, which also includes the fire department, both, uh, treatment plants. Uh, and here at City Hall. Uh, you may recall that back in two thousand and thirteen, the Parks Department purchased that lawnmower from Jacobson. And the mower, Jacobson West, to replace the mower that we had. Immediately after purchasing that mower, uh, for a continuous of eighteen months, we had issues with the mower. Uh, and it was more out of service than it was in, in service. So over a period of time of negotiations, Jacobson, uh, negotiated with us, uh, and we received a check for forty-three thousand, five hundred dollars. We want to take those funds and apply it to the new mower. We had three vendors which we got quotes from. One was from Lawrence Tractor Company for approximately fifty-six thousand, seven hundred dollars. Second vendor was from Team Power Tractors for approximately fifty-four thousand, eight hundred dollars. And then again, Valley Truck and Tractor of Yuba City for a total of fifty-three thousand, one hundred and fifty-one dollars and twenty-five cents, obviously the lowest bid. So we are here this evening, asking you again to, uh, allow us to purchase the mower. Claudia, take any calmer, uh, questions at this time.
Any questions of staff?
Mr. Collins, nice to see that sale stacks is staying right here in our backyard.
Literally, literally.
And it's nice also that we were able to get the settlement with, with Jacobson to move forward. And a big chunk of that, the cost of this, uh, being paid for by the settlement on the defective mower. Thank you for your.
I'm just glad we get to mow more than two inches of grass.
We'll see how much grass we have, be able to move by then.
Now, we may, we may not, we may not need it.
All right, entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve staff's recommendation.
Second, yeah. Motion and a second. Any further comments? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None? Unanimous, passes.
Thank you.
All right, item number ten, replacement of automatic chlorine gas shut-off. Diana Langley.
Good evening, Mayor and council members, and first, I would like to acknowledge the Girl Scout members in the audience tonight. They're out of uniform, but we have several Girl Scout members here tonight. So the item before you is replacement of the automatic chlorine gas shut-off system at the wastewater treatment plant. Regular maintenance and repair of the chlorine system, including the emergency closure system, is required by the facility's process safety management plan. The emergence, the current emergency closure system is no longer manufactured, supported by the manufacturer, or has any available spare parts. And as you can imagine, an emergency shut-off valve for the chlorine system is a critical piece of equipment at the wastewater treatment plant. Powell and Halogen are the only two companies that manufacture and service automatic chlorine closure systems in the Western United States with Telstar Instruments as the regional supplier for both systems. After review, staff is recommending award of the purchase to Telstar Instruments for the purchase of a Powell E-Pro Chlorine Emergency Closer System in the amount of sixty-eight thousand three hundred twenty dollars for installation and startup with the finding that it's in the best interest of the city.
Any questions of staff? All right. Entertain a motion.
Make a motion to move forward with this.
Second that motion. All right. Motion and second. Any further comments? Seeing none?
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose. Unanimous. All right. Item number eleven, ordinance. Social Host Regulation Ordinance for Underage Drinking, presented by Chief Rob Landon.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. First of all, I'd like to recognize the Steering Abuse Substance Coalition, Nina Martinez and Duly Aglar and the people that are here because they're the ones that really had a lot of information for the social host ordinance. And a little bit of background, first of all. Whereas laws prohibiting furnishing alcoholic beverages to underage persons target furnishing alcohol beverages to underage persons, social host ordinance's accountability refers to laws that hold non-commercial individuals responsible for underage drinking on property they own, lease, or control. A Practical Guide to Preventing and Dispersing Underage Drinking Parties articulates why regulating underage drinking parties and other gatherings is an important priority and why social host liability laws should be considered an essential law enforcement strategy for deterring these gatherings. Many people dismiss underage drinking as a normal rite of passage in adolescents. However, it is important to remember that alcohol is one of the most common contributors to injury, death, and criminal behavior among youth. Underage alcohol use can have immediate and potentially tragic consequences, as well as long-range harmful consequences, such as increased risk for chronic alcoholic addiction. Enforcement activities to limit youth access to alcohol are critical to reduce underage drinking and its often tragic consequences. One common way that underage drinkers gain access to alcohol is at parties. These parties are commonly large gatherings of young people in a home or in an outdoor area, such as a beach or a park or in some other venue like a warehouse rented for this particular purpose or other houses. These parties can be particularly problematic because of the number of drinkers involved and large quantities of alcohol consumed. Reports of alcoholic poisoning, traffic crashes, property damage, community disturbances, violence, and sexual assault are all too common as a result of these parties. Teen parties are a primary avenue for underage drinking for high school and college students and a high consumption of alcohol and binge drinking. Meyer, Forster, Murray, and Wagoner in nineteen ninety-eight found that the most common setting for drinking alcohol among high school seniors was someone else's home. High consumption, five or more drinks is also associated with drinking in larger groups. The authors conclude that interventions that modify the environments in which adolescents find themselves have an impact on alcohol beverage consumption levels. Policies aimed at increasing the liability of adults who provide alcohol to or drink with minors may help to reduce underage drinking. New survey results show local teen drinking rates are higher than the average in California. According to Substance Abuse Steering Coalition, local teens are engaging in high-risk drinking more often than in past years. Subs- the Substance Abuse Steering Coalition conducted surveys over the course of several months in two thousand thirteen. A total of one hundred surveys were collected from residents and youths in Uba City. This data, along with other sources such as the California Healthy Committee Kids Survey, the Wake Forest School of Medicine, Millennial Youth, and a Young Adult Survey, and several others were used to show the need for specific interventions that will help elevate use, elevate substance use and abuse among our teens and locally, young adults. I don't think that read right. Were used to show the need for specific interventions. Results of the two thousand thirteen California Healthy Kids Survey show that seventeen percent of eleventh graders report being drunk or sick after drinking. Twenty-one percent of ninth grade and twenty-eight percent of eleventh grade students in Uba City report having at least having one drink in the last thirty days. Residents of Uba City reported that fifty-six percent had been given an alcohol, had been given alcohol as minors. And ninety-five percent believe it is important to have laws protecting minors from alcohol use. According to forty-four percent of Uba City eleventh graders surveyed in two thousand thirteen, they determined it was very easy to obtain alcohol in Uba City. Easy youth access to alcohol is supported by anecdotal, anecdotal reports from young persons. In recent focus groups, youth reported they often get alcohol from their own homes or a residence of their friends. Fifty percent of Uba City youth respondents from a random sample survey conducted by the Wake Forest School of Medicine stated that they had received alcohol from a friend or acquaintance. Forty-two point nine percent said they received alcohol from their own parent or, parent or guardian. And twenty-five percent said they received alcohol from another parent or guardian. In the same survey of youth, twenty-five percent stated that the last time they drank any alcohol was at another person's home. Thirty-seven point five percent stated that they drank alcohol at a home or apartment dorm. And lastly, thirty-three point three percent stated that someone else's parents or guardian hosted the last party that they attended. Monitoring the Future Survey showed that the most widely used substance abuses were tobacco, alcohol, and marijuana. Twenty, and twenty-two percent of high school seniors report binge drinking on a regular basis. The Substance Abuse Steering Coalition supports current research recommendations from the Institute of Medicine and National Research Council. The IOM report recommends a greater emphasis on restricting alcohol, alcohol access by strengthening laws and enacting ordinances that restrict youth access in home parties. And basically the analysis is that the purpose and intent of this ordinance is to, number one, facilitate the enforcement of laws which prohibit the service and consumption of alcoholic beverages, beverages by minors, as well as to deter the service and consumption of alcoholic beverages by minors and promote the reduction of underage drinking. Number two, to establish a duty of persons having control over any premises, premises who knowingly hosts, permits, or allows a gathering at the premises to take reasonable steps to prevent the service and consumption of alcoholic beverages by minors. To protect health, safety, general welfare, and quiet enjoyment of property and properties, neighboring the location of these gatherings at which minors are served and consume alcoholic beverages. And to impose civil liability for the recovery of emergency response costs to such gatherings after the first event. The proposed ordinance would make it an infaction for any person having control of any premises to knowingly host, permit, or allow a gathering to take place at the premises where one or more minor consumes an alcoholic beverages whenever such person having control of the premises either one intentionally serves or causes to be served an alcoholic beverage to a minor for consumption, or two, knows or reasonably knows a minor has consumed an alcoholic beverage and thereafter fails to immediately take appropriate action to prevent further consumption of alcoholic beverages by any minor. It also addresses imposing civil liability for any persons convicted of a second or subsequent response for the actual cost of the emergency response. The fiscal impact to the city of Uba City would be negligible. No costs are associated with the implementation of the proposed ordinance. The alternative is to not adopt the ordinance or provide staff with direction for adopting the proposed ordinance. The recommendation of staff is to recommend the city council adopt the social host ordinance as written, conduct a public hearing, and waive the first reading. And with that, I'll open it up to the council for the public hearing.
All right. Any questions of staff? I do have. And to the mayor.
Yes.
Uh, chief, a- as I read this and, and I read through the actual ordinance, um, I see that only and at the second offense does this rise then to the lo- to the level of a misdemeanor. And just for clarity, a misdemeanor means that a person could actually serve up to a year uh, in a county jail should they be convicted of that crime. Why do we start in um, at such a low level of just a simple fine, uh, it being an infraction for the first offense?
I think that was something that council, the city council and I uh, talked about. We looked at other ordinances in the uh, throughout the state. And that was kind of the uh, the medium where we wanted to head at, but we're obviously open for any um, changes in the direction of the council.
All right. I mean, I just simply look at this as, as um, every time we hear about it, uh, whether it was last year graduation uh, or it will be this year graduation, someone uh, will host a party. Uh, there will be an impact on our local emergency rooms. There will be an impact uh, within families. Uh, there will be fights. There will be potentially auto collisions. Uh, there's always a chance of a fatality. Years ago, I responded to a quad fatal outside of a, a, a hosted party. And uh, that is something that I wouldn't wish on any other member of our community, the family. Um, they were devastated by, by what happened that night and many of them have never recovered. Um, I don't take it lightly, the, the use of alcohol and especially someone putting forward a, a party. Um, that they allow individuals or lock them into a safe area or they're watching after my kid or my neighbor's kid um, and allowing them to drink. Uh, I mean, I, I look at this as a, as one of those violations that I, I think that um, our community should not um, be lax on. And, and I think that imposing a strong and clear message, uh, I think is one way of of continuing that message on a, on a larger uh, scale.
Thank you.
Comments? All right. Just a, just a question for a council member, Buckland. So I mean, just to sort of understand this, obviously the first one is just a, a fine. Are you, what would you recommend?
I, I would recommend that, that um, that the penalty be a misdemeanor. Uh, and then looking at a degree of um, of circumstances that may happen. Uh, I think if somebody hosts a small party and it's under control and they're cooperative, um, certainly that's the dis- the discretion of uh, the prosecuting body as to how you would deal with it. If it's a party of, oh, let's say hypothetically, a bunch of Sutter kids, um, and it's the entire hypothetically, the graduating class and all of their friends, um, I think that, that there needs to be something that uh, would impose at least a, a minimal jail time uh, for those that are hosting it. They know what they're doing. It's clear. Uh, and it is a direct attack on everyone's families.
You know, and I agree with you there. And I think prior to this, chief, this, we, we don't have an ordinance within the city limits that does anything. It's just kind of an understanding that as adults, we don't provide alcohol to minors, number one. Number two is we don't have parties at our house uh, with the alcohol or alcohol cabinet unlocked and we leave. So this is the first ordinance that's being introduced in our community that kind of puts some teeth into anything at all, number one. Number two, and I think, you know, this is the first step of it, but the second step needs to be, we do need to make this not only citywide, but countywide and region-wide so that you can't go out of Uba City and go have a bonfire and a party outside of city limits because this ordinance does not apply to them at that point in time. But I believe there's also an out in here. For example, if I'm gone out of my house and my kids decide to throw a party and I have no, no knowledge of it, I'm not liable for that. So it's a matter of parents providing alcohol to their young teenage kids and supervising it, such as we had something happen within last year where they're all confined into the thing. But I think, you know, once we have an ordinance, you can always improve on our ordinance. Coming back of seeing it, I think from the chief's report, last year there's over a hundred calls to loud parties with children that were involved. And when you take a look at it, a hundred calls in this community with kids with drinking alcohol, that's quite a bit.
Just for clarification, it was a hundred total loud party calls.
Yeah.
Not involving just youth, but just a total of a hundred parties.
And how much would you say out of a hundred involved underage drinking at the parties?
We don't track that. I couldn't. But it's something we will be able to track with the uh, with the new ordinance.
Right. But I think it's a great start. I have a question, chief. Um, aren't there current laws such as contributing to the delinquency of a minor that would already do some of what this is, is doing or not?
They're actually different. This is meant to hold the person that's holding the party accountable for the ordinance. The one you were talking about, consumption, providing alcohol to a minor, that's more or less going out and buying something at a store in a public venue. And, and I did want to address uh, Mayor, uh, Councilman Gil's comment about going to the county. I think what the Substance Abuse Steering Coalition's idea was to bring it to somebody first and be the starting point for this and then venture out to the other areas. Cause we all, we've talked, we, we, we agree that it has to be a stronger stance throughout the area to make it more, I, I think there's more potential for having parties outside in larger areas. But they're looking for a starting point, somebody to build the strength. And, and this is what we're looking for is somebody within the city.
And we, and we thank you for bringing that to us first.
Mm-hmm. And through, through the mayor, I just want to say, yeah, there's laws and so forth out there for underage drinking as far as, you know, purchasing at twenty-one. But we as parents and adults of the community need to take better charge. And this will allow us to do that. And I appreciate you bringing this forward. I'm a strong, strong proponent to protect our children. And we as adults across our community need to, need to take that responsibility to do so. As far as the county, I was, I had an earlier meeting and it was brought up that they are going to probably discuss that, I believe, in tomorrow's study session. They have a joint session going on. So it will be brought up in the county arena as well. Um, but we appreciate it because we do need to take steps and protect. The kids are growing up fast. Um, and they want to grow up fast. Um, so we, we need to get a hold of this. So I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
All right. Uh, unless there's any other questions of chief, I'd like to open the public hearing. I have four speaker cards here. I'd like to encourage the speakers to, uh, if you hear somebody else say something, don't just repeat it. Uh, try to keep the, the thoughts original uh, so that we don't spend a lot of time. And you have three minutes to speak and I will be cutting people off at the three minutes. So and open the public hearing and Janet Silver, if you would please step up first and then following Janet. And I'd like to have you line up so that we don't have to waste time waiting for people. Would be Carrie Ozeran.
Yeah.
Sarah Davies, and then Demaris Vasquez, and Yacina Cervantes.
Mayor Dukes, do I start now?
Yes, go ahead.
All righty, start the clock. Um, I didn't plan to go first, but um, what I'd like to talk about is uh, in night, the early nineties, we started the Substance Abuse Steering Committee right here in this room. We form it, formulated it. And through the years, it has evolved to include the youth. And you can see from the participation of the youth that they really do have a voice. So I'd like to reiterate some of the comments, just one sentence, that the chief brought up. Social and public policy. You will see a glossary of um, terms for Friday Night Live, the law, institutional rules and regulations, and formal and informal rules, and understanding that affect the lives of young people. F and L is committed to engaging youth in affecting and shaping such policies. That's what's before you. Um, as you may recall, a couple of years ago, we came forth with youth and we talked about the marijuana growing issue. Thank you very much for passing that. It is now in all of the governances in our By County area, which is absolutely phenomenal. I happen to have um, came to my attention last year that there was a large party with five hundred youth. If you don't think it had just an impact on those youth, you should visit some of the schools and the teachers and the staff and what they went through when they were debriefing with some of the youth that had either attended the party or were affected by that. Now I'd like to talk to you about Friday Night Live. We started out as a drinking, driving, reduction pro- program. In nineteen eighty-eight, I was hired. We're no longer taking that charge. It's solely youth development. You look at these young people here on the SAS committee. They are part of the result of youth development in our community. The people sitting in the um, out there in the audience who are county employees and who are serving with the Substance Abuse Steering Committee should be commended for the work that they've been able to do with few amounts of funding. The funding that actually went behind this ordinance came from outside our community. That's the best kind of funding we can get. Nothing came out of our own community. It came from the East Coast, from a wonderful organization. Youth Development Model for Friday Night Live was a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for three years. Some of these youth, I don't think, I think they're too old to have been part of our SAS back in the day. But um, with that hundred and fifty thousand dollars, we made an improvement throughout the By County area as far as youth development is concerned. My three minutes are probably up, so I'll let you go. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Janet. Go ahead, Carrie.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, and fellow neighbors. My name is Carrie Ozeran. I'm here as a parent in support of the social host ordinance. I raised two daughters here in Uba City. I recognize the challenges facing parents in, of adolescents in the twenty-first century. I support adoption of this ordinance because it holds the account, the adults accountable for putting youth at risk. I often hear people say they feel it's a parent's job to guide their children and teach them not to do risky things like drinking while underage. I often hear people say they feel it's a parent's job to guide their children and teach them not to do risky things like drinking while underage. I agree, parents have a strong role as guides for their children. But I also believe all of the adults in a community have a role in helping protect all of our youth from the possible tragic results of poor judgment. Why would we expect every young person to make perfect decisions regardless of the circumstances when we know adults don't make perfect decisions? My heart breaks when I think of a local family who recently lost three young members due to the terrible decision of an adult who chose to drink and drive. We know the brains of adolescents are still growing and developing and that the ability to make good decisions involves a part of the brain which is the last to mature. This is one of the reasons that the legal drinking age is twenty one. This ordinance would hold adults accountable and would act as a deterrent to those who might otherwise allow teens to drink in their homes. One of the responsibilities I accepted when I became a parent was the responsibility to childproof my home. I locked up items like cleaning products so my toddlers couldn't get them. As a parent of older children, it was my responsibility to make sure they and their friends couldn't get access to anything else dangerous like prescription drugs or alcohol. Unfortunately, not every parent takes this responsibility seriously. There are too many dangerous things that can happen when teens get access to alcohol, which is both intoxicating and addictive. This ordinance would hold adults accountable so they we wouldn't have to wait for a tragedy. Such as a sexual assault or drunk driving accident to punish adults who put youth at risk by permitting them to have access to alcohol in their homes. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Sarah Davies.
Hello, I'm Sarah Davies. I'm volunteer for SAS and I, you already talked about the delinquency issue. And just wanted to emphasize that the ordinance is civil in nature, not criminal in nature. If you guys wanted to make it stricter in the future, maybe we could change the ordinance so that it would be. Have the possibility of a misdemeanor at first, but I think that it would be good to go ahead and pass the ordinance as it's written right now. And I live in the city limits right now, but I'm moving to the county and I would like to personally. Commit my time as a volunteer in the future to also push, if you guys pass it, push for it in within the county.
Thank you. Demerit. I guess we have tag team here. Go ahead.
Yeah. Good evening, mayor and council members. My name is Don Maurice. I go to Yuba City High School and I'm part of the SAS Youth.
I'm Yocenia and I also go to Yuba City High School and I'm part of SAS Youth. So from what we see, from what we have seen is that adults providing alcohol for parties has become a norm. And they usually provide alcohol since most of the people that are invited to the parties are underage and cannot purchase it for themselves.
So we're here to basically support as youth, we'd like to. State that a lot of our classmates aren't very smart when making decisions, so this would prevent them from making. Some decisions and a lot, the wonderful ladies that went before us talked a lot about what we were going to say, but. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else who'd like to speak? State your name and address.
My name's Tammy Graham. I live on Dustin Drive. John Buckland, he covered most of the things I wanted to say. Good job. Hello, mayor and council members. I'm a parent volunteer for SAS. And I just want everyone, it is my right as a parent to make decisions for my children. It's not any other parent's right. And I know that we should know where my our children are and, you know, that we can't always, we can't always count on that. I was almost killed in two thousand one in a car accident. I was hit by. An older teen, nineteen years old, and he had younger teens in his car. They had left a party. We he they were going about ninety miles an hour and hit us out on Highway ninety nine. The guy driving the car I was in, to this day, he'll he'll never be the same. He had massive head injuries, UC Davis for. For almost a year and then rehabilitation after that. And by the grace of God, I am walking because I was crushed. My legs were crushed, left under the under the dash, had to be cut out of the car. They had just left a party. So he he, the driver of that vehicle, as young as he was, got six years in prison and I just can't fathom. One of my children ever happened to go through that or have to deal with knowing that they took someone's life. And so I just want to encourage you all to really consider this and thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you, Tammy. Does anyone else like to speak on this item? All right, saying none, I'll close the public hearing. Bring it back to the council for comments or any further questions?
Questions, but I'll make a motion to. With staff's recommendation to pass this ordinance.
And I'll I'll second that and I think it's a much needed ordinance and let's keep moving forward. You're doing a great job.
All right, there was discussion of perhaps changing the ordinance or.
No, all I would request at this point is that the police department track closely the calls. Over the next six months, especially going into the season that we are. Among high school kids, it is the drinking season and prom and. Graduation and all the other events that that go on. Like to see a tracking of it, so we have a better idea of what we're looking at. On a more global perspective for the city.
And then just one further comment. I would hope that if this passes, this is the. The first read or what we're waving the first reading on this, this will come back to us. But between now and then and the graduation season that this message gets out to our community that. We are not going to tolerate adults who are going to provide a venue and alcohol. Or other things that they should not be doing and that we are going to take this ordinance very seriously. With that, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes unanimously. Thank you, chief.
Thank you.
See you in two weeks.
To all the teenagers that are here today.
All right, next item. Give a minute in case everybody wants to make a mass exodus here. We we won't force you to stay the rest of the meeting.
You're welcome. Thank you.
That's right. For those of you in the audience, we've had a malfunction of the projector this evening. But if you want to see the presentations, they will be available on the city's website tomorrow.
Or we could get a a candle. I could go back there and do puppet shows.
You would do that, yeah. All right, next item is a consent calendar. All matters listed under the consent calendar are considered to be routine and can be enacted in one motion. There will be no separate discussion on these these items prior to the time the council votes on the motion unless members of the city council. Staff or public request specific items to be discussed or removed from the consent calendar for individual action. Is there anyone from the council which is to remove any of these items?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to poll item number seventeen, just to discuss that separately.
All right, item number seventeen. Anyone from the public? You wanted to speak on item number eighteen? All right.
Poll item number eighteen.
All right, anyone, any other items? Okay, I'll entertain a motion for items twelve through sixteen on the consent calendar.
I'll move those items on consent.
I'll second that motion.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, motion passes unanimously. Item number seventeen, professional services agreement. With Dennis Cook for planning consulting services.
So, Mr. Mayor and council members, this item before you this evening is currently our city's without a. Without a planner. When our director of development services moved on, it left that position vacant, which I'm in interim role. Additionally, we have a current principal planner in the budget that's currently vacant. That we're waiting to fill until a permanent director is hired by the city. As a result of that, we have the need for consulting services for planning. And we had existing one-time funds that we could use for that. Dennis Cook is the former former planning director of the city, has stepped right in and has helped us process all projects. Nothing has been slowed down. I'd say it's actually sped up and moving forward as we have an additional staff member to deal with projects. Dennis has currently already had a project of forty five thousand to prepare. The master plan for the El Margarita Estates master plan area. And as a result, we need to come back before city council for two reasons. One, this addition was above fifty and in total, it would be above fifty. Mr. Cook's hourly rate is a hundred and twenty five dollars. For his technical expertise, it is well below the market rates. And the services that he's provided to us are well below any rate, end quote, that we've received from other consultants throughout the Sacramento region. So we'd ask you tonight to approve this contract with Dennis for a total of a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars and that be in the best interest of the city.
Right, any questions of staff?
Nope, you've answered my questions. Thank you.
All right.
I'll make a motion to approve item number seventeen.
All right, have a motion. Do I have a second? All right, motion and second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post unanimous. Item number eighteen. Memorandum of Understanding Between Sacramento Area Council of Governments, SECOG, and the City of Yuba City. For a project known as Highway Twenty Revitalization Project. Ben Moody, please.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. The item before you is the next step in a multi-phase project the city has initiated a couple of years ago. In November of two thousand fourteen, Mr. Bush, the past. The past community development director came to you with a. With an understanding, with a report on the. The design that was processed and done. In two thousand thirteen, Highway Twenty Better Street Design Guide. Basically, we use SECOG, SECOG gave us a grant. A couple of years ago to perform a study on how to improve Highway Twenty and make it a more economically vibrant. Corridor. In November of two thousand fourteen, SECOG awarded us another. Grant in amount of a hundred thousand dollars to move forward with the next phase, which would be to which the city would like to use to. Go forward with that design study and actually complete hundred percent plans for the block between Stafford and Clark. And do thirty percent plans for the overall corridor. And so with your direction from November, staff is basically moving forward with contracting with SECOG for that funds and then. Proceeding with. A designer to develop those plans. So with that, past direction, staff is is recommending that we authorize the city manager to execute the MOU. Between SECOG and the City of Yuba City, funding the. Associated with the city's Highway Twenty Revitalization Project. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Thank you, Ben. Any questions of Ben? Pat Miller would like to speak on this. I'll open the public hearing and allow for comment or questions on this item.
Thank you and. Mr. Mayor and members of the city council. I understand that this is phase two of the Highway Twenty Revitalization Strategy. Which is a four-phase project to beautify and revitalize the area along Highway Twenty from the Tenth Street Bridge to Highway ninety nine. However, SETA would once again like to point out the following concerns. The first concern we have is that the city's contract with SECOG. Says that Caltrans's approval of the project design is not required. I question that statement big time since Highway Twenty is a state highway and is under the jurisdiction of Caltrans. And anything done on the highway right away must have Caltrans approval. The second concern is that any landscaping in the median and close to the travelway must be maintained. And in order to provide safety to maintenance workers, lanes must be closed. This is a heavily traveled state highway corridor and closing lanes during the day will undoubtedly. Cause more traffic congestion than already exists. Closing lanes at night increases the danger to workers and would probably cost more. The third concern, a question is, who will be maintaining the landscaping, the city or Caltrans? And who will pay the bill for maintaining the landscaping? The fourth concern is that we are in the middle of a drought and while that may not be. That always be the case, the possibility is real that there will be future droughts. No one controls the weather but our heavenly father. Thus, plantings that require concernable water should be avoided. I ask this council to please look closely at what is being proposed and what our tax dollars are being spent on. I do not believe that what is recommended in the Highway Twenty Better Street Design Guide produced in twenty thirteen. With the help of the Walkable and Livable Communities Institute is the right way to go for this state highway corridor. The money would be better spent for such a project on a city street. Such as Bridge Bridge Street here in Yuba City. And finally, I want to thank Diana and Robin for answering my email questions on this subject in a very timely manner. That is very much appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you, Pat, for your comments. Ben, would you like to address some of the questions and concerns?
Yes, I'd just like to follow up that some of the points Mrs. Miller has made are very well noted with staff. Staff fully understand that it's on the Caltrans corridor. And that's part of the reason why this project takes so much time and effort to do. And so part of the requirement with the design is that there's full coordination and approval with Caltrans for whatever we're doing because they will have to approve it. And then also. With that plan, staff understands that there's there's design aspects in there that not aren't achievable. But there's there's goals and references that we can work towards with Parkway Strips. And different architecture to enhance the area. And so the the city definitely wants to work towards a low maintenance. Attractive design that is drought tolerant.
All right, thank you, Ben. Any other comments or questions from council?
The mayor, I have a question for Ben. The money that we have here is coming from grant funds, right?
The hundred thousand dollars in question tonight is from grant funds.
And then just another point of clarification, I know Mrs. Miller had made the point about doing Bridge Street, which I think. Needs to be done, but I believe we're getting ready to tear that road completely up within the next year and a half to two years. If not sooner for the new Fifth Street Bridge. So, you know, I know we always try to put something down then tear it back up again, so that's why I think that we're trying to hold off on Bridge Street, but. That's another street that needs quite a bit of repair as well, so thank you.
Mr. Buckland.
Just a couple of comments and and I don't think I have anything specific for Ben. As a director on on the SECOG board, one of twenty eight people, and I sit with Mr. Benapal, who. Listens to the concerns of the SECOG directors when it comes to. The interaction of a jurisdiction and a proposed highway project. I think that that this being in the District Three backyard. They are very concerned about what the Highway Twenty corridor looks like. They're a huge advocate of this project to build and move traffic more efficiently through Yuba City. And it's something that we know that by stopping at Highway ninety nine, we have not resolved our Highway Twenty. Corridor issues, but it is the first phase of trying to. Bring together and kind of revitalize the that commercial corridor. To make it more viable, so there is there's more input, more financial input from the city. This plan, as we move forward, is not going to be something that will be achieved in a very short period of time. I disagree with many of Dan Burden's design pieces within that within that plan. But I think that there's nuggets that we can take out of that, that we can work with, that we can move into this next phase on. And when we talk about the Fifth Street Corridor, we are currently, Diana and I and and SECOG staff are are working together. To find funds to build and move forward with that project and open that corridor up as a local street. That will give us access into into Marysville, also taking some of the burden off of the Highway Twenty corridor. So as we move forward, things will change. We're not going to see a this great, you know, flash occur and all of a sudden, there's things that we don't want. And and I think that you're exactly right. We need to look at at how we're going to maintain it. I couldn't have been more displeased the other day at noon to find a highway patrol car sitting in the in the number one through lane of Highway. car sitting in the, in the number one through lane of Highway Twenty as they were patching the cracks out in the, in the median. And I thought, boy, could we have picked a better time of day to do this? But that was a, that was a Caltrans project. But as we, as we look at that, you know, how can we service that and how can we make it a good area that doesn't consume a lot of dollars on a go-forward basis once this thing is designed? So I think it's going to be important that the community be involved in that design aspect of this.
Absolutely, and I think that's, your points are, are well taken that whatever we decide to do there needs to be drought resistant. We need to take into consideration, how is it going to be maintained? We certainly know that Caltrans has not been a very good partner in maintaining that piece of property through our, that's our major corridor through town. And they've done a very, very poor job of keeping that up. So as a part of this study, I would hope that we come to some agreements as to who is going to maintain it, what is it going to look like? We want our, our major corridors to be showpieces like Highway Ninety-Nine is between Ridge Street and Highway Twenty. We took the initiative to go out there and, and fix that because Caltrans didn't. So we want our main corridors to look good. We don't want weeds growing up or going out and putting tar over cracks and calling it good just to keep the weeds from growing. So I think this study is, is very timely and I think that there will be plenty of input from the community as to what we, the finished product. But this is, like you mentioned, this Phase Two of a four-phase process and I believe that there will be plenty of opportunity for input as to what the final product is going to be like. Alright, with that, is there any other comments? Would entertain a motion?
Move to approve staff's recommendation for number eighteen.
Alright, have a motion and a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous, alright. Item number nineteen, Greater Sacramento Area Economic Council Membership, Darren Gale.
So economic development is, is a tough job and it takes a variety of different partnerships to make economic development work. And tonight, wanted to discuss an opportunity that we have with partnering with a new organization out of Sacramento called Greater Sacramento. Sacramento had an economic development corporation called SACTO for many years and a group of private sector individuals got together and discussed the need to, to improve our economic development efforts throughout the region. As, as a result, that private sector group started up Greater Sacramento and they hired a CEO, Barry Broome, from Arizona who's here. I told him to make sure he be here by six forty-five because our meetings are always done before then. And he's put together a variety of different initiatives within this group. So this is a, a private-public partnership. He has an annual budget that he's putting together of four million dollars annually with three quarters of that coming from the private sector. He's looking for thirty businesses to, to commit a hundred thousand dollars a year for five years. Currently, I believe there are almost twenty-five commitments. Those go from Sutter, Kaiser, VSP, Tykert, and a variety of other businesses that we would love to have them right here in our community and expand. So I see just the opportunity of working with these CEOs helps identify our region as a, as one of the growing areas within economic development. As relates to economic development, Sacramento, it's very difficult and is not on the map. So where does that put Yuba City? It even puts us even farther behind that and that's the reason why through our economic development, through our economic development efforts, we try to continue to market Yuba City, connect with local brokers so that we have that opportunity to compete. In the six years that I've been here, we've had not, not a ton of opportunities to put in requests for information on properties. I can tell you since January and the start of Greater Sacramento, we've already received more from them than we have any, any other organization over the past six years to provide information on possible relocation of sites to, to the Yuba Sutter region. As part of their financing plan, they're looking to raise about a million dollars from the public, public sector at a forty cents per person. My staff report says that's twenty-nine thousand for Yuba City. I actually, Terrell corrected my math and told me it's twenty-six thousand, so, so I apologize for that. We do have existing budget savings from our economic development budget as I've been filling in as the director role in Development Services. Another key initiative that, that they're pushing forward is they've spent about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars on an analytical tool that we currently don't have. We have a very difficult time of analyzing how we stack up against another city, another community, another state, another, another country. Through this partnership, we will have a direct connect to be able to utilize that information to tell the Greater Sacramento about a property or a project and they can provide us the analysis. If we would do that on our own with an organization that's out there, it would cost us well over twenty-six thousand dollars annually. This is the third time that I know that at least Barry's been here within Yuba City. The first time he met with myself, the mayor and the city manager. The second time, he did give a presentation to our Economic Development Commission. The Economic Development Commission unanimously supported and actually encouraged a three-year commitment to the organization. Tonight, we're asking for one-year support. Again, this would not require any additional allocation of funds, but would be from one-time budget savings out of the economic development budget. And at this time, I'd like to invite Barry up to introduce himself and talk a little bit more about the organization.
You're not limited to three minutes, Barry, but you know, we'll, we'll, we'll keep an eye on how long it goes because I'll just do this if it gets too long.
I was hoping to follow the fifty million dollar conversation because I thought it'd be easier on me, you know, just teasing, of course. Well, thank you for having me, Mayor, and it's good to be in Yuba City again. I've been out here four times if you count hanging out on the weekends, eating food. But I think it's a really important opportunity for us as a community because first off, you know, defining ourselves as a community and not a bunch of little jurisdictions that feel competitive towards each other is, is kind of the first step. So one of the things that Darren and fifteen of his colleagues have been doing, I think for the last four weeks, we've been meeting three hours every Friday discussing, you know, how this organization will work, how we'll share information and opportunities to each other. You know, what are the agreements between us on how we put our best foot forward? I think one of the things that Darren talked about that is very important, you know, was the analytics platform that we put in. When I, I kind of, you know, took over the SACTO group and, you know, when we had a competitive situation with a company on my eighth day, I made a certain set of commitments to the company. Then I went back and found out that that took two hundred hours for us to do it. I tracked it. I was very nervous because, you know, once I got to about a hundred and seventy hours, I wasn't sure I was even going to be able to get to work done. Today, after we put our analytics platform in the exact same exercise I gave to a twenty-one year old economic student at Sacramento State that's an intern and, and because of all of our new software programming and all the different things that we've acquired, he was able to produce that work in twenty minutes. So one of the things that has made it tough for communities to go out and compete for these efforts is you get shortlisted and, you know, Darren gets a hundred and twenty-seven page document from a consultant from Chicago. Well, I mean, obviously, it's incredibly labor intensive to produce the information on that document and you have to have an organization that's pre-planning what your position is the marketplace to communicate that. My head of business development from Phoenix was born and raised in California, so he started today. John has an extensive background for fifteen years in industrial and commercial development. So I think, you know, the goal for us is to bring a continuous, single-minded effort to grow jobs in the community. So this is about increasing our reputation, increasing our competitiveness and growing jobs. And it's about opening up the size of the market. You know, once you expand and grow the market inside the market, you know, those jobs will be distributed by people. Some of the people that live in Yuba City might drive to Sacramento for work. There might be somebody from Roseville driving to Davis to work. So it's really a jobs initiative and it's really a tool and a set of capabilities that's available to your community and to your economic development team that they currently do not have. And, and some of the things like going in and selling into the San Francisco and San Jose markets and LA and being able to work a national program is very hard to do as an individual community, but you can do that if you, you pull the collective efforts. So the first step that we'll be doing is we'll be building a direct selling strategy into the California markets. We already know every California company. Some of that is going to be a quality of life, ease of doing business promotion. Some of that will also include being more specific and targeted in industries that we're proficient in like ag and food and water competencies, you know, veterinarian capabilities, animal health, animal science. Some of these industries are very niche plays and will require direct selling. Some will be more broad-based like maybe an insurance company that would want to put a regional headquarters somewhere in California. So our first year, our goal is to be the best organization in California and to have our region known as the most cohesive, cooperative, well-working region in the state of California and be the easiest place of doing business in California. And that's one year from the start date of July first when the partnership is formally formed. I sent your city manager an agreement, a contract, it's a one-way contract. He basically has a list of services and requirements and reporting processes that I'm required to report to him on a quarterly basis, so he knows the progress of the organization. You'll have a seat on the board with the CEOs and I think we're off to a good start and I'm very optimistic about our ability to set a good example for our community and set a standard for excellence in California. So I'm very privileged to be here. I've enjoyed coming to your community. I told Darren, whenever you need me, call me, I'll come out. I told the mayor the same thing. Last Saturday, I was with the mayor of Woodland and I enjoyed the Little Shop of Horrors Show at the Woodland Historic Orchestra. It was a very beautiful show. So the mayor and I went to dinner with his wife. So, you know, I, I worked for communities and work on communities my whole life. I've been doing nothing but economic development work for twenty-eight years, so I enjoy working with local leaders on making their community better. And I know when we work collectively together, we put our best foot forward and I'm looking forward to bringing in an organization together that's going to be great for your community and make you proud of your association with us.
Alright, thank you, Barry. I, I will make a comment that I am thankful for our region that we were able to secure you for this region so that we could stop the bleeding to Phoenix. The companies that you were pulling out of California, hopefully now you'll be able to bring some back in.
We hope.
And I, I, I think that we are fortunate as a region to have you heading up this, this project and I think that this is nothing but a win-win for, for Yuba City.
Thank you, sir.
Any questions or comments for Barry? Alright.
I'll make a motion to approve staff's recommendation.
Alright, have a motion, do I have a second? Alright, a motion and a second, any further comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you, council for your support.
Thank you, Barry. Alright, item number twenty, agreement with the National Resource Network for services related to increasing Yuba City's economic competitiveness.
I want to ask why you're laughing.
Alright, alright.
He just, under his breath, he said so moved.
Okay. I don't speak as well as Mr. Broome. And he's a remarkable man. I, I feel as if I could sit here and just listen to him continue on. He's very, very well spoken. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, as was mentioned, this matter before you has to, concerns increasing Yuba City's economic competitiveness. The origins of this were in November of two thousand fourteen. The city became aware of an initiative called the National Resource Network. It started through a cooperative effort of the White House and Housing and Urban Development. And collectively, they came together and decided that they wanted to look at deploying teams of private and public sector experts to work with cities, to help cities identify local projects that would bring economic benefit. And an application was submitted and, and here we are today. I'd like to point out a few people in the audience this evening. One individual I've known for quite some time, his name's Russ Branson. He is with Public Financial Management and he is also representing the National Resource Network. And the other individual actually has to do with one of the tasks before us. And her name is Nancy Crooks. And Nancy is the executive director with the North Central Counties Consortium, which oversees our workforce investment board. And so, and I'll mention that in just a moment, how Nancy is involved in this. So the, the, the network first met with us in, in December, met with, over the course of two days, with a number of different individuals in the community. Staff put together a collective of individuals based upon the economic development work plan. These are the people who helped your council formulate a work plan. From that, the network went back, conducted an assessment that evaluated our needs based on evaluating economic development, housing, land use, infrastructure, crime, schools, budget, and city operations. And that is the assessment that is included in your agenda packet, which is actually a compliment, should the city not proceed, which I, of course, recommending that we are this evening, but that assessment in and of itself is a very, very powerful document in terms of the information that's collected and it's nice to see. So based upon that, the network proposes to cities a customized direct assistance strategy and that is what your council is considering this evening. Now, this is where I'd like to note that when the group came together, and I'd say the group of business people from the community that, that represented many different facets, when we put this group together, we did not know of the outcomes of what the assessment would result in. And so when we found that one of the assessments had to do with what is proposed task number one, which is strengthening, strengthening the city's job readiness pipeline, which let me just say, for me, based upon what I heard from the groups is, is making sure that we have a good match between the abilities of our workforce and the needs of our businesses. After this came through to us, we realized that Nancy's group and also the superintendent of schools, who are the key players in our community in providing these services, weren't included in that front-end conversation. So through this, we've made the commitment, and it's in the staff report as well as the report, that they will be the partners in this on a go-forward basis. And so, and I think it's very meaningful that Nancy is here this evening and I just wanted to say thank you very much. The second proposed task is more city-centric and that is meaning in terms of our operation and our success as a city operation to successfully grow our community, we need to make sure that our infrastructure is sufficient. And this task addresses the financing of our utility infrastructure system upgrades. We have a, a plan in place with regard to the repair and replacement of our existing facilities for water and wastewater. We need to make sure that we can successfully expand our plants, our plant and our collection and distribution systems to the west. Our general plan, it's no secret, is a, envisions a community of a hundred and thirty thousand people. We are a community of sixty-five thousand people. In order to successfully get to that target, we need to have the basic groundwork in place and that is what this proposal addresses. So we're fortunate in this instance that this is a cost-sharing arrangement, a seventy-five percent covered by the network, twenty-five percent by the local jurisdiction. So inclusive of travel costs that factors out to about thirty-three thousand dollars of city funding for a project of over a hundred and thirty thousand dollars altogether. We see this as a benefit from the city staff perspective, especially in terms of implementing the council's goals that have been stated over the years. And I just, I had actually an overhead that I was just going to touch upon the goals, but you know, I just wrote down a few in terms of maintaining and improving our infrastructure, preparing for growth and the growth strategy of growing our people. This is important that we make that match between our communities, our human resources in our community and the needs of our businesses. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Gregor, any questions? I would entertain a motion now.
I'll, I'll go ahead and move to staff's recommendation for this approval.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous, passes. Item number twenty-one, position and compensation adjustments within the Public Works Department. Diana Lanley.
Good evening again. So this staff report's a little bit complex, but there's three key things that I'm proposing to address with this. Number one, amend the salary schedule for the chief operator classification. At the water treatment plant, we currently have a chief plant operator. In the salary schedule for the wastewater treatment plant, we currently have chief plant operator one and chief plant operator two. And so what I'm recommending is that we actually delete the chief plant operator one position and retitle the chief plant operator two position to just chief plant operator to mirror the structure at the water treatment plant. We currently don't have this position budgeted and so there's nobody in this position right now at the wastewater treatment plant. But through the fiscal year fifteen sixteen budget, I'm proposing to change one of the wastewater operator three positions to a chief plant operator so that we then have two. So that we then have um two supervisor positions at the wastewater treatment plant at the appropriate um level wastewater license level to be able to operate the plant. The second item is related to a salary increase for the wastewater treatment facility supervisor and the chief operator. So in August two thousand and thirteen, the city council approved certification pay for the individuals that hold water distribution certificates and water treatment certificates. And so what this resulted in was a seven and a half percent increase for the first level supervisors at the water treatment plant. The same thing was not done for the wastewater operators at the time, even though the um complexity of their position is the same as the water treatment plant. These are critical positions at both plants with a lot of liability and responsibility to serve the city. And then in um, two thousand and fourteen, November two thousand and fourteen, the city council approved a ten percent ten percent salary increase for the wastewater operators due to retainment and retention issues, recruitment issues. We had three vacant operator positions. And um, the, those are, water and wastewater operators are extremely difficult to recruit for because they're such a small pool in the state of California. I'm happy to report that with the salary increase, we were able to do a recruitment. We received um some great candidates. We just had a new operator start today. We have another one starting June eighth, and the other third ones in the process for uh pre-employment approval. So that was very uh successful. Um, also, the structure within the city has historically been that um positions are aligned horizontally and vertically. So supervisor positions are aligned horizontally if they have the same level of responsibility. And then vertically, there's usually a set um difference between the supervisor and then the next position supervised. With the increase in pay for the wastewater operators, it created a compaction issue with the supervisors at the wastewater treatment plant. So the other item that I'm recommending is an approximate seventy-five percent increase for the wastewater treatment facility supervisor and wastewater treatment facility chief operator classifications to address that compaction issue. And realign those first level supervisors with the same positions at the water treatment plant. And then finally, um, the plant maintenance supervisor position at the wastewater treatment facility has been vacant for some time. We went out and did an extensive recruitment. This is probably the recruitment that we have um, done the most extensive advertising, reaching out to various um trade organizations um online. And with that, we received twenty-seven applications, of which there were no qualified candidates. And so we went back to our human resources consultant to give us a recommendation. What's the, what's the issue here? The recommendation came back that the um, that's an indication that the salary is too low. And so we're recommending approval of a ten percent salary increase for the plant maintenance supervisor classification. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions of Dan Lanley? Alright, I'll entertain a motion. I'll move staff's recommendations. Motion, do I have a second? Alright, motion, a second. Any further comments? Being none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Unanimous, alright. Item number twenty-two, business from the city council. We will start with council member Didball. I'm sorry. Appointment to the Intergovernmental Relations Committee.
Sub moved.
You're trying to get this meeting over, aren't you?
Mayor and the vice mayor to the Sutter County Intergovernmental Relations Committee.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. As uh, Councilmember Gill just said, this is an appointment to the inter- intergovernmental relations committee with the Sutter County Board of Supervisors. Um, this committee has been um inactive for quite a few years. Um, Sutter County does appoint two members to it. And uh, we'd like to activate it again and recommend appointing the mayor and vice mayor as members of this committee.
Alright, um, at this point, then I guess we open the nominations for this committee.
I believe it says uh, appoint mayor and vice mayor.
Yes.
So I'll go ahead and make that recommendation and point the mayor and the vice mayor to the Intergovernmental Governmental Relations Committee with Sutter County.
Have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Alright, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I guess we could oppose it, couldn't we?
We could.
Too late.
Too late, no. Alright, now moving on to item number twenty-three, council, city council reports. Councilmember Didball.
Let's see, um. Couple of weeks ago, I took a tour with uh Yuba Sutter uh Transit. Um, thank you Keith, he was here. I think he's already left. Um, but we had about an hour, almost two hours of taking a tour of the facility. Um, all the buses, uh quite amazed at the luxury of those buses. I'm considering taking it myself to Sacramento a couple of times during the week. Um, the other meeting, uh I had the local agency formation commission, the LAFCO, uh we went over the budget. Um, but it was a pretty much straight call there. Uh, last week, we also uh did a welcome reception for Yuba College President. Great guy, just absolutely wonderful reception. Um, and hoping to have some continued relationships and collaborations between the college and some ongoing business opportunities, so. And we also did the Development Services Director interviews all day last week. Great, impressive candidates. So we're looking forward to seeing what the final selection will be, but wow, what a pool. Um, great job to our human resources as well as um Phil. Um, who helped um bring in those candidates. Um, and then we also, in collaboration with um our Yuba City Fire, Yuba City Police, Public Health, um, Yuba City School District, Nancy Aubert, Parks and Rec, Brad McIntyre, um, Ampla Health, um, and also Sierra Health from Sacramento. Um, put on a great kickoff health forum, April fifteenth. Um, to actually go along with some of the social hostess um ordinance, um talking about drugs, alcohol and um marijuana, e-cigarettes and so forth. So it was a great kickoff, great, great collaboration of some wonderful, wonderful people to put um awareness out there. So thank you for those of you that are here um to help on that venture. I believe the next one um that's set up is August fifth, um to continue that, that type of health form to bring continued awareness to some of the youth issues that we have. And I think that pretty much covers that month.
Alright, Councilmember Gill.
I'll start off, uh, first a lot of stuff going on within the last three weeks, uh. A lot of highlights, one of the main things was going back to Washington DC. Um, as a chairman of the Sutter Butts Flood Agency. Um, we're all uh put on different committees. There's probably like ten to twelve different committees from healthcare to banking and finance, to flood protection, uh transportation, yeah, hospitals, uh homeland security. I mean, there's unbelievable amounts of them. And you have the CEOs of Kaiser, Sutter Health, UC Davis, along with some physicians, neurosurgeons. Uh, you have the mayor of Sacramento, Kevin Johnson. Uh, you have former assembly members, Daryl Steinberg. I mean, the list just goes on and on and on as far as what these people are. And I think our purpose has always been, it's cap to cap from capital to capital. Is that we get divided up into different teams and we're not on the same team. And I think, Mary, you and I were probably in about two or three meetings that were probably together, but the rest of them were all separate. And I was mentioning how Councilmember Buckland and I, we were not in a, even in a single meeting. And I think I saw you maybe one night at a reception or something. That's how these meetings are. But our focus is always uh twofold. Number one is obviously to go and meet with the folks that are there uh as far as who they are. But secondly, to come back and push our agenda for our region. And what I'm talking about region is because when we're there, we're visiting with uh Congressman Garamendi, Congressman Lamoffa, Congressman Barra, and Doris Matsui, Congresswoman Doris Matsui. We're going as a region and we're going as one voice. And you know, we have, there's about three hundred of us that actually fill up the halls. And it's amazing, they've been doing it year after year, and I think almost what, over twenty-five years, that this program's been going on. And the success that we come back is unbelievable. And I know people always say, well, what did you get? Did you get some money? And, and these, these trips, I've always said, is they're long-term trips. And slowly by slowly, you start seeing the fruits of labor coming across. Because even though we're thousands of miles away, the first question comes up is how's your negotiations, how's your discussions going with the Indian tribes? Uh, most of these guys knew what was going on and we get help from Washington DC. I just want avenues. Second one was for ourselves, is trying to get additional fundings, whether trying to get additional funds into the current budget or trying to get unallocated, unreserved funds to finish the projects, what we're doing. And as we're going to these meetings, you know, people are telling us, you need to do this, you need to do this. So I, I found the meeting, meetings uh were very, very helpful, uh the ones that we were able to attend. Uh, so, so I thought it was great. Uh, again, addition to those, we hit the Senate Appropriations Committee, House Committee, so pretty soon you get all commuted out. Um, also attended the uh welcome reception for the president of Yuba College. Uh GH, very nice guy, uh seems like he's a community person. Lives in Yuba City, lives in Happy Park area. Which I thought is, you know, everybody talks about actually putting their roots here, and he's actually here, so uh near exactly where he's at. Uh, also spent the entire day with Councilwoman Didball, uh interviewing. Uh, made our recommendations to our city manager. Uh, again, like I said, had some wonderful, wonderful candidates, uh all within the state of California. And I believe we made our recommendation of three. No matter any one of those three that are selected, I think they're gonna get the job. Uh, you know, up and running immediately. Uh, they're very well qualified, so uh very, very excited with that. Uh, prior to leaving on DC, I had a great, great friend of mine, a relative of mine, a younger brother of mine, uh passed away. He was gone to New York with his family um on spring break. And he was forty-five years of old, old, lived here in Yuba City, was the owner of Circle R Irrigation. Farmed over a thousand acres of fruits and nuts. And lived here, right here in Live Oak area, and he passed away of a massive heart attack. And just, just within a few months, three, four months, he had a stress test done. Because he did cardio every day, he was absolutely fine. He was an avid golfer at Peachtree. And uh, I think to this day, we're still totally shocked that somebody who's that prominent, that well-connected, this community, that young, that active, uh can pass away. And uh leaves behind a wonderful wife and two very young children. Uh, who'll both be graduating, one from elementary school this year and one from high school. So our hearts, my thoughts, prayers, goes out to his wife, his family, so uh Mr. Mayor, I'd like to ask that we close this meeting in his honor and his name tonight.
That's all I have. Thank you. And Councilmember Buckland.
I'll try to keep it fairly short. Um, I was born, no. Missed, I missed the last uh council meeting, uh due to the fact that I was in uh Mexico for uh spring break. Many people think that, oh boy, you know, it must be nice to go down there, sit on a beach. Um, uh kind of, um, I was with a bunch of kids, uh they weren't drinking. Um, but they were building homes uh for homeless individuals down in uh the community. Um, just south of the border, um that many of us are, are well aware of, it's Tucati. Um, and, and all the kids get to brag that they go to on spring break to the Tucati Beer Factory. Uh, so I don't want any rumors getting out that, that we actually take them there, that, that they're in the neighborhood.
The underage kids that we passed his orders on.
Yeah. Yeah, um.
No, it was the adult that was taking them there.
But, but uh, these kids are amazing uh youth. We had uh twenty-eight youth, they built two homes. They fund these homes, they, they build them, uh they put their heart and soul into them and, and it's an amazing process to watch uh these kids show up at early meetings and, and have absolutely no experience of building a home, and they're able to do that. What we encourage these youth to do is to get, come back here and become involved in our community. Uh, and become more active in programs here uh locally that, that they can become involved in uh to help in homelessness and, and other issues that they might see uh fit for um our area. Also attended the transit meeting, um, we're fighting Yuba City. It's only one putting up a fight on some changing routes for uh the buses. Um, we will continue the fight. They're trying to remove the senior center uh bus stop from a loop activity um with Yuba Sutter Transit. Um, and claiming that our seniors only have to walk some five hundred feet away um to get to the senior center. I think that's all well and fine, everybody needs a little bit of exercise, but when it's cold and windy outside, um and it's wet, they need to have a, a stop right near that center. Um, so hopefully we can, we can continue that fight. I'll be meeting with the senior group tomorrow. Um, our commission tomorrow uh to go over a strategy where we can get more public involved. Also went to the Casa de Asperanza uh open house. Um, this facility's been open for thirty-seven years, I think, pretty close. Um, that house is at the end of its life. Uh, that's all I can tell you. It's over a hundred years old. Um, I used to go to the attic to chase out the, the uh ghosts at the attic, early in my career as a cop. Um, and they have expanded into the attic now uh an entire office complex. Uh, it, it blew me away to see how much they've used that facility. Uh, and they have a six-year plan to replace that uh facility in our uh community somewhere. Uh, so we are looking for, and they're going to need about five acres uh to be able to do that. Uh, also went to the uh reception for GH Java Harryport. Nobody else wanted to try that name. But uh, yeah. Yeah, GH, you got, yeah, you got the beginning. Uh, but that's great because I, I think that that cooperation with Yuba College is gonna continue to grow. He's excited. We're excited to have him in the area and look, and honestly uh, hope to be able to expand the Yuba City campus in a, in a short period of time. Also, a dear friend of ours, all of ours, um and yours, uh Mayor Shingo Fuji was re-elected as mayor of Toray City over in Japan here recently, so we send our congratulations to him. Well, it's back in Washington DC, um was able to go with the, the mayor, got me legally uh this time into the Pentagon. Um, and we did a very short tour, uh because we were on a fairly short leash trying to get to our airplane. Um, but able to meet uh incoming um uh ISR, ISR commander, uh Colonel Holgrum. Holgreen, uh and he should be arriving in our community, I think by the end of, okay, first of, first of June. So we look forward to him uh being here. Had some of the very same meetings, um, you know, that have been talked about, so I'm not gonna go over them. But that one of the most interesting ones was a lunch, um, uh meeting that, that was had with the entire group. That was uh, the speaker at that was Jack Lou, the, the Treasury Secretary. Um, very interesting individual to listen to, especially in person, uh especially with a, about a twenty-five minute message. Um, and, and certainly put a, a good perspective on what's going on in Washington and what the current um tone is in Washington. There's a lot more cooperation going on uh on the east coast than what has in the last couple of years. Uh, but with that, you know, I really focused on transportation while I was back there, had a number of meetings. Um, looking all the way at rail safety and for the chief, um for our fire chief, one of the discussions we're having is um, who is going to pay for the training uh first responders to rail incidents? And um the suggestion from our group is trying to put that uh directly on the shoulders of um Union Pacific and the rail carriers. Um, so they can put that together, that training together, because currently our firefighters have to go to uh Colorado for training, for live training, live fire training, uh because we're unable to burn um the same material here in a, in a simulated fire in California. So uh, it's a very costly event uh to be able to send people to, so we're trying to get the, the rail company to, to bear that responsibility as they move forward. That's all I have.
Alright, and I'll try and make mine quick here also. Um, also attended the uh reception for GH Harryport, Java Harryport. Uh, interesting, his name has every vowel in the alphabet in order. Uh, but anyhow, it was, it was good to see him here and his commitment to our community. Uh, had the Sutter Butts Fin- Finance Committee meeting yesterday and the Regional Water Authority meeting with the executive director, attended the Casa de Asperanza Open House. And then the cap-to-cap meeting. Um, just wanted to highlight one of the, the key meetings, the Senate Appropriations Meeting, where we met with the uh staffers that actually had come from Army Corps of Engineers, so they were new in the position. And they asked us if we had any projects that had been authorized that were not appropriated yet. Unfortunately, we do, unfortunately, we do have one, the, the uh the final portion down south of Laurel Avenue, which is about a thirty-five million dollar project. And they indicated to us that if we could get the
And they indicated to us that if we could get the information to them quickly, that, uh, the, the deadline had already passed, March twenty-seventh, for that to be in the president's budget. But they would work their hardest to get that in the budget. So it's having meetings like that back in Washington that we can't do from here, that can help us get funding that, uh, otherwise would not happen for years. Uh, without, uh, having those personal meetings back there. So it makes, uh, the cost of those trips very valuable, uh, when we are able to do that. I had approximately sixteen meetings on flood and, and, uh, it was a very busy trip. Was able to meet with the, uh, former wing commander, Phil Stewart, from, uh, he's currently stationed at the Pentagon, to meet with him and, and go over issues about Beal. Uh, and then Colonel Jay Green and, uh, Jake, the new commander, uh, that will be coming out here in June, uh, enjoyed the tour. It was good to see, uh, Jay Green. He was the, uh, former, uh, group commander at Beal Air Force Base, and so it was good to see him and, and, uh, keep those relationships fresh. And then went to the going-away dinner for Colonel Sipowicz, who, interestingly enough, is the Colonel that is leaving Beal Air Force Base, going to San Antonio to, uh, be in part of the twenty-fifth Air Force there. Uh, the, the new commander, which is coming in June, they're crossing, uh, the, the admiral back at the Pentagon doesn't want to release him yet, so that's why there's a gap here, so, uh, uh, but it was a pleasure getting to meet him also. And I guess, um, that is that. And like to close the meeting in honor of Sonny Calcot, or Calcat, excuse me. And, uh, as Cash mentioned, uh, and keep his family in, in your prayers. With that, meeting is adjourned.